Morning, welcome to Monday. As you can see, there's two of us here today. Commissioner Rader has a commitment this morning. If it ends early, you might see him pop in, but till then we'll just turn it over and let you go.
Good morning, Commissioners. Susie, Finance Manager. Today we have a District Court with us. So they are part of the general fund, so their budgeted revenues will not equal their budgeted expenses. We have intergovernmental revenue with a budget of just shy of 111,000. So far, they've brought in 93,000, so they are over our target for the year. And that's made up of reimbursements from the state for the judicial salaries for the judges as well as interpreter costs. Goods and services has a budget of 538,000. So far, we've brought in 370,000. So that's also above our target for the year. 273,000 of the year-to-date actuals is revenue received from the cities for their portion of district court costs related to their cases. Fines and penalties has a budget of 585,000. So far, we've brought in 542,000, so we are over target for that one as well. And those are going to be penalties for traffic and non-traffic fines. Miscellaneous revenue has a budget of 12,000, and we've almost brought in that entire amount for this year, just shy of 12,000. Most of that is going to be interest earned on fines and penalties that are in collections. So it was 11,800 roughly. Personnel has a budget of 2.7 million, and so far, they've expended 1.5 million. They have 19 FTE, and .67 FTE is currently open. We are anticipating amending the budget down by approximately 200,000 for the judge pro tems. They had that vacancy that I mentioned occurred in August of 2025, so that did that does affect them being under budget slightly. Supplies has a budget of 58,000, and so far, they've expended just shy of 12,000. They do anticipate replacing courtroom chairs, printers, and scanners later this year. They also, last year, went to a new software, which had implementation costs last year of roughly 40,000, which they did budget for that 40,000 this year. They informed us that the annual cost, they found out, was actually only 15,000, so we will be amending that budget down slightly as well. Services has a budget of 461,000. So far, they've expended 375,000. 272,000 of the year-to-date actuals are the internal service billings related to IT. And then included in this line are going to be those interpreter costs that are reimbursed by the state.
Sorry. Quick question on the revenues type thing, because it looks like we're above budget on a lot of that stuff. And I know we did some adjustments. And I know we did some adjustments to the cost sharing on that. Is it related to some of that, or are we seeing more activity coming through the courts, or maybe both?
It's both, yeah. You know, I try my best to anticipate how many filings we're going to get, based on what we got last year, but there are a lot of filings, so that is higher than I expected too, which is going to lead to more fines and costs coming in.
Yeah, so would you say it's been a significant increase, or? Just trying to wonder.
I would have to look at the filings. I haven't really compared them to last year, but they've been continually going up since twenty twenty-three, when the drug possession law changed. So I think they did a real spike between summer twenty-three, summer twenty-four. It kind of leveled off, so I wasn't sure, and then it's kind of gone back up to that same place it was in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. Question on the interpreter services, when those monies get reimbursed by the state, or have they been, or when will they be roughly?
So that's done on a quarterly basis. We have to submit data for every interpreter we use, for both our District Court and the city cases. We submit the data on their behalf. And then they reimburse us for half of the costs that we do up to, and a capped amount that they just decide based on what their funding levels are for the state, for the program. So like, at the beginning of the year, they told us we could have thirty thousand dollars approximately, but then in the middle of the year, they had some extra money, maybe some other courts aren't submitting their data. And so then they gave us about ten thousand more. We got an amendment to that, up to forty-nine thousand, I believe, for last year. So I never know how much is going to be available for that, but we just submit them our data, and they give us, for each case that we use an interpreter for, they will reimburse us half of what we pay that interpreter for that court time, up to that capped amount that they decide. And then I do that on the behalf of the cities, and I just pass that through to them, their portions based on the cases that were their cases.
Okay, thank you.
So that's always a guess, too, on how much of that we're going to get. I never know.
So our next department is still part of the general fund. It's Probation Services. Goods and Services has a budget of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So far, they've brought in one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, so they are slightly below target. Those are, in that line includes the city's fees for probation related to their cases. That looked like it was approximately sixty-three thousand, and then the remaining ninety-six thousand is the county's share. Fines and penalties has a budget of five hundred dollars, and they have exceeded that and brought in just shy of fourteen thousand. So that is made up of restitution charges. Personnel has a budget of five hundred and eighty thousand, and so far, has expended three hundred and sixty-six thousand, so they are slightly below target. They do have five point five FTE in this department. Supplies has a budget of just shy of nine thousand, and so far, has brought in thirty, or expended thirty-seven hundred this year. Services has a budget of just shy of seventy-five thousand and has expended just over fifty-nine thousand, and forty-nine of that is related to the internal service billings. So that's all we have for District Court.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Have you had to do any moving or anything over there yet, or?
Not yet.
Not yet?
No, November is our first.
November is your date.
It's just probation. We're going to start small.
Yeah.
The court itself is at the very end, and so hopefully, it's all perfected by the time.
Yeah.
So we have our monthly financial review for you. So this is just comparing revenues and expenses that have been recorded through August. So for the general fund, for revenue, we've brought in just over thirty-seven million. At the time that we ran these figures, the third quarter rent payment from the landfill hadn't come in yet. It has come in, so that will add about another one point eight million in revenue to this amount. Expenses, we've expended just over forty-seven million, so the deficit when we ran that was nine point seven million. County Road has revenue of thirteen point six million and expenses of just over thirteen million, so they're in the positive, just shy of six hundred thousand. Solid Waste has revenue of fifteen point eight million. Their expenses are at twenty-five point five million with a deficit of nine point seven million, but eleven point five million of the expenses is related to the transfer for putting funds aside for covering the county's obligation for retirement of the landfill in the future. So that transfer was done early this year, so it kind of skews their expenses.
Do you expect that to? Do you expect that to wash by the end of the year? No, you're still going to be a little, okay?
Yeah, according to the way it's budgeted, they're budgeting to actually utilize part of the fund balance.
Okay. Is that eleven point five a yearly thing? Probably is, for the next ungodly amount of years, I'm sure.
Yeah, for twenty twenty-five, we had a little bit of catch-up with the estimates for Cell Ten, so we did have a bump there. Moving forward, it should be a smoother line going forward with that.
Yeah, okay.
I think in the past, it was approximately about seven million versus the eleven point.
Yeah, so the seventy-eight million dollar range is what we'd expect to see moving forward.
Gotcha.
So revenues at a glance through August, so starting with the general fund, property taxes. We are right in line with what we've collected through this point in twenty twenty-four. So this year, we've brought in eleven point six million, and last year, at this time, we had brought in eleven point three, which, both of them are fifty-seven percent of the budget. Sales tax, we're at forty-eight percent of the budget brought in so far, so that's five point four million. That's right in line with where we were last year at this point in time, of forty-eight, or forty-eight percent as well, with five point four million collected. Timber Excise Tax, we are up compared to this point in time last year. We brought in just over nine hundred thousand compared to six hundred and seventy-one thousand. PUD Privilege Tax had a budget of two million. We've actually brought in just over two million, so we have exceeded budget for that specific tax type. Last year, we had brought in, I'm assuming we amended the budget, so that way, they were exactly a hundred percent, but we brought in just over two million last year. Marijuana Excise Tax, we're at seventy-two percent of the budget, collected was seventy-three, or yeah, seventy-three thousand. That is down compared to twenty twenty-four. Last year, we had brought in eighty-four thousand, which was eighty-two percent of the budget. Skipping down to Criminal Justice, has a budget of one point three million. We brought in just over a million, so it's seventy-seven percent of the budget. That is also down compared to last year. We had brought in eighty-four percent of the budget, which was just over a million as well. Our jail booking fees are up compared to last year, so we've seen an increase of those of roughly one hundred and thirty-three thousand, and then seventy-four thousand for Department of Corrections housing fees. So we're at seventy-one percent of the budget compared to fifty percent last year. Motor vehicle license fees, we are slightly up from where we were last year at seventy-seven percent compared to seventy-six percent. We've brought in six hundred and seventy-one thousand. Investment interest, we are slightly down compared to last year. For the general fund, we've brought in one point two million, so fifty-seven percent of the budget. This point in time last year, we had brought in one point five million, but we've seen with the interest rate decreases, we are watching that, and that is kind of meeting our expectation that investment earnings will start to slow down. Rents, so we are exactly with where we were last year. We, the financials include both Quarter One and Quarter Two rent payments. Property, so skipping down the County Road Fund, so Lease Hold Excise Tax had a budget of eighty-five thousand. They have exceeded that and brought in one hundred and one thousand. Last year, at this time, they had brought in ninety-one thousand. Property Tax, we are pretty close to where we were last year, fifty-seven percent compared to fifty-six percent. So far, we've brought in eight point two million compared to seven point seven million. Timber Excise Tax is also up for this fund as well, budgeted one point two million. They've brought in one point one million, so it's ninety-eight percent of the budget compared to seventy-seven percent received last year. Motor Vehicle Fuel Tax, we are slightly down compared to last year. We're monitoring to see if the state has indeed fixed their reporting issue. They've communicated that they have, but Sean's watching that just to make sure. We'll see what it looks like next month.
You charging late fees, Sean?
Solid Waste has a budget of twenty-seven point six million, and so far, is received fifteen point six million, so fifty-seven percent of the budget. That is up compared to last year, and that's mainly due to additional transactions at the waste station. So looking at expenses for the general fund, Personnel, we're right in line with where we're at, with where we were last year at fifty-nine percent utilized. Supplies, again, we are right in line with where we were last year at forty-two percent. Services, we are slightly up, so we've utilized seventy-two percent of the budget. Part of that is due to the one million dollar increase for internal service billings, such as IT, motor pool, insurance. Capital, we are up as well. We've utilized seventy-five percent of the budget, and that is due to purchasing the Riverside Suites building in August. That was nine hundred and five thousand. Debt Service, we are slightly below where we were last year. Transfers, we had a budget of two point seven million and have made one point six million in transfers, so we are slightly up compared to last year. County Roads, Personnel, we're right in line with where we were last year, fifty-five percent compared to fifty-six percent. Supplies, we are below where we were last year, so we have two million so far this year compared to one point six million, but the budget is a little larger this year, so it makes the percentage smaller than where we were last year. But for Supplies, they have completed chip seal projects earlier this year. Services has expended four point one million compared to four point five million. They are expecting to see more billings come in, roughly three point five million, related to the overlay projects that were completed. Capital, we've utilized nine percent of the budget compared to thirteen percent. In Quarter Three, we did reduce the budget to move projects from twenty twenty-five into twenty twenty-six. Debt Service, that thirteen thousand that's shown there is related to the subscription liability that's booked by the auditor's office once a year. Solid Waste Personnel has utilized sixty percent of the budget, so that's pretty close with where we were last year at fifty-nine percent utilized. Supplies has utilized sixty-eight percent of the budget compared to where we were last year at forty percent, but they did purchase additional rock for the landfill roads. Services has utilized sixty-six percent of the budget, so eleven point three million compared to ten point eight million, which was forty-eight percent. Those are largely waste control payments, as well as the lease payments to the general fund. And then going down to Transfers, you can see they've made that eleven point five million dollar transfer compared to the transfer last year, which was only seven point seven million. So this is a snapshot of property taxes through August, so that eight point seven million is what we expect to collect for the general fund this year. Hopefully, we receive all of it and none of it trails off, but the amounts below that are what's technically still outstanding for those tax years. So this is a snapshot of sales tax received. So last month, we saw a pretty large increase in sales tax, but it did go back down in June. So we're not, so far, we're only roughly forty-two hundred below what we had collected in twenty twenty-four. So we are anticipating that we'll still, we're not anticipating any large increases, like what we saw in May. We think that was kind of an anomaly. Recording fees, those have been up for most of the year. They did see a dip in August in the number of transactions that were performed. And then this is going to be the revenue associated with the transactions performed in August. So the, even though the transaction numbers were down, the revenue was technically up. And that's all I have for Finance.
Do you make sure, if you already don't plan to, make sure Commissioner Rader gets a copy of this, as Justin? Okay. Okay. Gin items for next week, it looks like it's Finance and Public Works.
Are we ready? On Finance, we just have the one item. It's on Consent Agenda Item. It's related to the contract for our third-party third-party administrator, I believe, Emily Vivian or Helsman.
That does the workers' comp.
Yes, and it's a one-year contract, um, with that group, personal services contract.
Do you, do you know Kathy, how it compares to last year's contract, or we?
Yeah, it's, it's basically a little over a three percent increase in last year's contract, so. Very, very similar.
We just do these folks year to year?
We're currently doing them year to year, yes. And we're, we're pleased with their services, like we said, they've been very responsive and, um, very helpful, um, on our services, so. And we're just leaving it on a year-to-year basis. That's it.
Okay. Are you expecting another person, Sean? Are you, you, you okay, or do you need us to?
Yeah, so we're expecting Susan for two of the three items. Um, we can do the first one if you'd like, and see if we can talk long enough that she makes it here. So the first one's gonna be a call for bids. As the board knows, earlier in the year, we did a, uh, call for material bids where we would pick it up and deliver it to the shops. This one is for a material delivered to the shops and stockpiled on site. So this is requesting for three thousand tons of five eights minus rock and five hundred tons of one and a quarter inch minus. Uh, and this would be stockpiled to the Longview, Kelso, and Calama. You know, as we look at the kind of view of Keltz County and the rock pits that are available and how that looks moving forward, it's kind of our first step into looking at delivered material outside of our, uh, oil rock and trying to get an understanding of what that'll look like in the future. You know, if it's gonna be a barge, railed, or other items, trying to dip our toe in, get some pricing and see what we can expect as we continue to, uh, move forward with rock needs as we may not have, uh, as many stockpiles available for use in the future.
Yeah. Makes sense. Are those, are those amounts that you're going out for, basically based on what you used this last year?
So, yeah, the three thousand ton is a thousand tons of that. Um, five eights minus, that's gonna be for, um, my understanding, shoulder rocking, you know, after we overlay, they'd need to fill that gap on the side of the road, so if somebody has need to pull over, if not this big drop or uh, kind of smooth there, and, um, the five hundred ton of one and a quarters for more rebuilding items, that's gonna be specifically for the Longview shop. Um, those are what they've requested. I don't know how much they've used in the past, but this was their expectation, their need for this current overlay season and to, um, correct the, uh, the shoulder issues they have currently after overlay.
Okay, so I guess i- is this replacing a, a, a normal amount of, of stockpile that we keep, or is it a, an additional amount from what we normally stock?
It would be similar to what we normally stock. Um, in the past, we would have, uh, driven it, our, our dump trucks and picked this up directly and stockpiled ourselves on site. So we're kind of looking at, uh, an alternative here.
Okay. Okay. Susan, you had a couple on here?
I guessed well. So, good morning, Susan and Gina, county engineer. Uh, the additional public works items, the next is a consent agenda item for qualifications for as-needed civil engineering services. Our current contract was signed in twenty-twenty-two, so it is time to go out and get new contracts. We currently have three consultants that are providing these services, and since twenty-twenty-two, we have spent approximately two and a half million dollars on these consultants. So these are the, uh, firms that we call up during an emergency and we need some quick turnaround work. Um, they are also the firms that we use when it's not Wash Dot money because they have very particular rules and DBE requirements. But we, in the past years, this is a higher amount than what we usually do over three years. We had the, when we first signed it, we were re-bridgeload rating all of our bridges. So all of them provided some of those services, they've also worked on some of our Fish Passage culvert, uh, projects with expertise that we don't have, some of the structural expertise. And they've also done, so the ADA transition plan, lot of the traffic transportation plans, these would be the people we would go and we spread the work out amongst them. Um, so they've, their contracts are pretty even on what we've spent with the three firms. So we use this quite frequently, it in, improves, it streamlines our process of getting someone on board, especially during an emergency.
So the new one we go out for will be another three years, and these people have the ability to?
Yes.
Send in your qualifications, just like they did the last time.
Just like they did in the last time, you will see extensions to the existing contracts so they can finish up the, uh, work that they've already been assigned, but we want to start fresh in twenty-twenty-six, um, with new contracts. It kind of makes the auditors happy that we go out every few years.
Every so often.
Yes, so. Then the other item from Public Works is our, is the motion item, um, to get approval on change order number four with active construction for the Eric Creek Fish Passage project. Uh, we finished that one up earlier this year. We have been negotiating, uh, the final change order, um, based on the number of days that we're adding to the contract. So there were quite a few delays in this contract, um, and some due to utilities, um, which then caused the delay, excuse me, to the start of install, and there was a delay on obtaining the culvert itself. So we negotiated with them, they wanted forty-five days, we got them down to twenty-one days. So this is to pay for twenty-one additional days of traffic control, uh, so that signal rental and items of that nature. It's, we calculated the dollars based on their lump sum bid, divided it by the initial contract amount to come up with our daily rate, and then we multiplied it by the twenty-one. Uh, there was also some additional pumping costs for the bypass, um, that we, that's also included in this change order. Uh, the earlier change orders, one, two, and three, uh, were all no-cost change orders. One of them includes a deduct for rebar testing due to some work that they create, did incorrectly, so we had to do some additional testing. Uh, then there was the additional time, the change order that added some time due to the delays of the utilities. And then the other is a Wash Dot paperwork item, so they were required to do training hours on this project and they switched people, so that was a paperwork exercise with Wash Dot and the contractor to make sure that we were nodding our eyes and checking, crossing our Ts, those first three items, because they were no cost, were all signed by myself.
Was this, uh, the project with the utilities that we had to get some help from legal?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
This is, Lumen took forever to get out of the way.
How many, they, twenty-one days additional time, how many days were already put into it?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but if I'd have to guess, it was about a ninety to a hundred day project originally. That can't be right.
So, well, that's gotta be close because that's a thirty, thirty-two percent increase in cost in, in this work order change.
Yes.
Okay.
The good news, this is the only change that's costing us any money, because the product, the project is in functioning, this is closing, this is so we can close it out.
Okay.
But I will have the number tomorrow of how many working days.
Okay.
That's all I have on the agenda, unless you guys have something else for me or more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking at, uh, Jessica, does she have this contract negotiations that part of? That was Marin, so they'll be in for, for that, and there'll be executive session, okay. And I would probably. Okay. Yeah. Even if Jason get on, I don't think his is a big deal, even if he zooms on or something, yeah, okay. Hey Sean, out in the Cass Rock, uh, yard, off the one side of it, there's always these sitting, these wrecked cars, is that part of our property, or is that? Are those cars we wrecked, or is that, probably maybe that's Cass Rock property and it sits there? Sometimes, it's no big deal, I'm just curious.
I think sometimes when we, uh, have to remove cars from the right of way, they need somewhere to store.
So that might be where we store them till you can get rid of them, I got it, okay. Did you watch any of that? Snippets of the Charlie Kirk thing?
I watched, uh, I think I got home from church probably about one o'clock or a little before, I watched all of it up to the end of it.
Yeah, pretty frickin' amazing.
I thought it was absolutely awesome.
Yeah.
I, I mean, President Trump.
Yeah.
He kind of turned it into a political thing rather than which was a little disappointing, but for all in all, it was wonderful.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, have a good day, thanks. Yeah, every time I think about. Pull, pull that thing off and what they kept saying, like six days or whatever to do that, and those people down there just God, people just filled that, it was, it was amazing.
Filled it, and the overflow.
Yeah.
And they still didn't have enough.
Yeah, that was just quite, quite the thing.
Uh, yeah, I wish, to see all those people and have that pulled off and put together. And my God, they had, they had the president, the vice president, the entire cabinet.
I know it, I know it.
And, and almost all of the Republicans from both the Senate and, geez, uh, the, the security risk that was there, I can't even imagine.
I hear you.
Made my heart skip a beat just thinking about it.
The governor of Arizona is probably going.
No kidding.
Yeah, yeah. Jason, how are you this morning?
Good morning, how are you commissioners?
We're good, yours looks pretty simple, it just looks like we're doing some, what'd you call it?
Code scrub.
Yeah.
Uh, earlier this, well, this summer, the legislature, um, changed the statute and, which uh, certainly impacted our stat, our, our county code, so we're trying to update our county code to reflect the changes in, uh, the legislation.
So tomorrow, what we're asking is we approve this resolution, and this resolution then gives you the ability to set a, a, a public hearing and get that done?
Uh, yeah, I think it'd be, I think it'd be done, yeah, um, I don't even know that. My understanding is that, given the fact that it's just a code scrub, it can be done.
Just, just with the resolution?
Yeah, because all we're doing is changing a number.
Okay, so we, we'll put that on the agenda tomorrow, actually, I just probably make it a consent item, I can't see it'd be much of a issue. Okay, we can do that, sir.
All right, thank you commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Ms. James.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gina James, Health and Human Services, I had just a quick miscellaneous item this morning. Um, we have a request from heaven for just under sixty-five hundred dollars to support the Veterans Stand Down. Um, it's coming up on Friday, October third, it's at the event center from ten to two. Um, we were able to support this last year with the Veterans Relief Funding, and so they're asking, um, for this year, um, to support it as well, the what they're asking for would cover the cost of renting the venue, so the space to hold the event, and then, um, the cost of serving, uh, hot lunch for all of the veterans who attend. And they put together some, um, to-go bags as well that have some water granola bars, some protein packs so that, um, the veterans can also take that with them when they leave, so. Um, if you're not familiar with it, they have a number of service providers that come and offer employment, housing, um, legal aid, haircuts. They offer a variety of services to the veterans who come and attend and, um, network and collaborate with each other, um, at the stand down, so. Um, like I said, the request was just under sixty-five hundred dollars for this year.
You know, we approved that last year, I remember Commissioner Mortensen had some concerns, but we approved it and, uh, I kind of monitored it and wanted to know some results and, and it actually, it served, uh, quite a few veterans. It seemed to, seemed to go over pretty well and, and be helpful to quite a few people, so. Personally, based on what they were able to do last year, I don't have any issue with it.
Is this a similar amount that was from last year?
Yeah, last year, last year they requested about twelve thousand, but they ended up utilizing about, I think it was right at six thousand dollars. Um, so it's any, so, you know, this year they kind of adjusted the requests a little bit to kind of fit what they needed from the previous year, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we're good with that one then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for chiming in, thanks Gina.
Yeah.
So, why don't we just, well, um, I was trying to give, uh, the opportunity for Commissioner Rader to get here because they're asking for executive session, was my thoughts on that.
Did we have any idea how soon he'd be back?
We really don't have a clue. I guess, why don't we just recess till ten, if they're over here, I guess we can, we can do that if, if we feel it's something he should see, we could just kind of put it off, you good with that?
Yep.
Okay, so let's recess till ten and then give him a chance to get over. Okay. Okay.
From executive session, no decisions rendered. I think that's, once again, Jessica had no other items. So I think we're, is there something I don't, I think we're good. We will adjourn. Thank you.